... by Councilwoman Medhi Abshir.
Our Lord and our God, we stand in this place at this time and acknowledge that we are blessed people. We also stand in this place at this time realizing the responsibility of the decisions that we will make for our community and for the citizens in our city. We ask that you would give us wisdom that the decisions that are made will be for the good of our people, for the good of our city and community. They will be pleasing to you in your name. Amen.
Disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Oh, my apologies. Got ahead of myself. Roll call.
Councilman DeGarris.
Here.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Here.
Mayor Pearson.
Here.
We have six present.
Don't need to reread that. All right. Citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to the workshop required items. Item A, the City Council will discuss the creation of a tree advisory board in the city of Poplar Bluff. Mr. Kaplan, is there someone here to discuss this?
Uh, no, I don't believe so, but I can adequately handle it, Mayor. If I may, um, as we recall from a prior meeting, we amended Chapter 430 of the Code of Ordinances in regards to our tree ordinance. And, um, and so what we want to do now is, one, set up the, um, the rules and regulations regarding how we manage our trees in this community, but also set up the criteria in which eligible, um, interested parties would be able to apply through an application process for, uh, membership of the tree, uh, board, I guess we're calling it. I see Angela White just walked in. Angela, do you have a moment to join us at the podium to kind of give them a little bit of detail behind, um, how you came up with the criteria for, um, people that may be interested in the, uh, serving on the committee?
Hello. Hi. We took a look at, um...
Your name for, the name for the record.
Hi, I'm Angela White, and, um, we looked at cities around Poplar Bluff that have tree boards, tree ordinances, and, uh, what their requirements are for, for city board members. Um, and, uh, what we're requiring is that you live within the city limits. Um, well, one of our members is going to be representative of municipal utilities, and I understand we're also going to have a non-voting member for, um, from the street department. So we have input in there also. Four members are going to be citizens from, uh, inside the city of Poplar Bluff. So, I think as soon as, uh, the board is approved, then we'll have it advertised, and you can apply through, uh, the city clerk's office. Is there any questions? Did I miss something?
Nope, this unless, um, Madam Mayor or Council has any questions regarding what we're proposing in regards to the rules, regulations, and/or criteria for the committee.
Angela, you got any guidelines for the rules yet?
Guidelines for the rules?
Yeah, or any, say something from another city that's got rules that we can...
Well, as I said, I looked at several different, we looked at, like, Farmington, um, Joplin, Dexter, Cape, um, Hannibal, and they're all, you know, pretty much kind of the same. Most of them, uh, the, the members were required to be within the city limits. Um, I believe, I don't want to say specifically, but one of the, um, cities in the area had, their school district is the, you know, delineating area, so... And, you know, we, we will take applications. Of course, we would like for people to have some, um, background in maybe tree management, um, maybe a legal background. We would like to have representatives of, you know, the community to have their input.
And to walk Dave, or Councilwoman Johnson, through the process. Once we get the board appointed, and that's their first duty, the one, not only getting the officers elected, uh, but also to put together these detailed rules and regulations that'll come back to the City Council for adoption, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Madam Mayor?
Need a motion to form the... One more question, how many members you going to have on the board tomorrow?
Well, there will be five members on the board, uh, four citizen members, one voting member from municipal utilities.
All right, thank you. And it's three-year terms. Staggered.
Will you be on this board, or...
I'm, I'm going to be the administrator, I understand.
Well, they will start taking applications for the board, just like any other board, correct?
Yes.
So, we would need a, um, motion and a second to, um, move this to the voting session to be held tonight. Do we have any of those motions?
Second.
Motion and a second to move item A to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item B, the City Council will review an amendment to ordinance number 7581 involving the purchase of property.
Uh, Madam Mayor, um, again, this item was previously discussed, but there were a couple items that we need for, for cleanup purposes. Uh, one is, um, the amount that was in the motion was incorrect by $5,000. The agreed purchase price was 125, um, 125,000, not the 120 that was in the previous ordinance. We wanted to get, um, that corrected. Um, the other piece, uh, is in regards to, um, environmental, um, concerns. Um, the, with the previous version, put 100% of the liability back on, um, the seller, um, in which obviously, as, uh, the seller, uh, looked at the agreement and had advice of his legal counsel, was not in his best interest, which, um, I understand that. And the reason why we asked for it as well, it's, again, that's, we ask for everything under the sun, just make sure, see if we can get it. Um, but, secondly, with that, um, there is not going to be a whole lot of soil being disturbed in this area where the soccer field's going to go. Um, so I, uh, I feel confident moving forward with the transaction with the, uh, language that was proposed from, uh, the legal counsel, uh, from the seller. Now, this, again, the only caveat is, obviously, um, your legal counsel, um, being Jackson Lewis at Review just would not agree with that because he wants to do environmental assessment, the whole nine yards. I just don't think it's necessary, given what we're proposing to do with the land. Um, and I'm just letting you know, that's my recommendation, and letting you know it's counter to, uh, legal counsel's advice.
Is it, without an assessment, if we, if, can we not contact an agency and just say, "This is going to be, we're not changing the grade, you know, we're not changing the grade of the ground"?
That's not what I'm aware of.
And so, I mean, can we, can we, can we get a communication on that, just with an agency that in charge of this, to say, give us a waiver or a variance on it?
They're not going to give you an environmental waiver without doing a full-blown environmental assessment. Um, and then, once you do the environmental assessment, as we submitted to state, um, and so then the state would have to proceed from there. It's a, um, it's a process, um, a fairly lengthy process. Now, the, um, the seller is willing to assume some of the risk, obviously, of, um, if there was any contamination on the property. He just doesn't want to have his family forever in perpetuity...
Yeah.
... at risk, uh, beyond his, uh, um, beyond his lifespan, is, is what he's concerned about, which I, I don't disagree with him on that part. So he is willing to work with us on, in regards to making sure there is nothing, um, there, but he wants that liability to be capped from within him, not his family.
Has, has that land been classified as a wetland?
That, I don't know. Mr. Avery, would you be able to answer that question?
To my knowledge, it has no classification as a wetland.
Okay.
The other 5,000 that we're considering denies just...
That was just a typo.
With flips.
Because he always said from the beginning, 125,000, and so, how the 120 got in, I just, I just didn't catch it. That was my error, and I apologize for that.
It's more even number.
Maybe, yeah. I guess, but, uh, but that was just an error that we should have caught, but we just didn't catch it. He didn't hit the last minute, say, "Ooh, I went 5,000 more." No, that wasn't, that wasn't it.
You want a motion?
Please.
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion. We change the, move it to the voting session, increase it to $5,000.
And the liability language? And accepted liability language as written?
Second, Assistant.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to move item B to the voting session. It'll be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item C, the City Council will review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding a revision of ordinance number 6441 that adopted the International Building Code, International Plumbing Code, and the International Fire Code for, in regards to a lead ban in public and private drinking water plumbing. Mr. Bob?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Member of the Council. Uh, January 4th of 2014, EPA enacted the Reduction of Lead in Drinking Water Act. Uh, we were recently audited by DNR, and we were not in compliance. This change in ordinance would bring us into compliance, and would discuss this at the Advisory Board, and would recommend the change of the ordinance. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
And we will be in compliance once we change the ordinance, correct?
Right.
Okay. This should be a relatively sim, simple, um, decision. Any of the council want to make a motion, or...
Questions?
Questions?
And when we didn't meet compliance, did we have pipes that did have lead in them?
I'm sure we do. It dates back to 1914.
Okay.
Uh, part of this is in the homeowner's side, part of it's on our side.
Okay.
What, what really, those are still in compliance. Uh, what happens is, if we go out and repair it, we get to reuse it, we don't get to sell it for reuse, we have to change it out. Kind of like what happened in, I don't know if anybody saw everything, that was included in your packet. Started in the late eighties with the, uh, reduction of lead and solder, with silver solder, and same thing with fixtures, went from lead to, to a silver solder and copper, no lead in the fixtures. Same thing on ours, we use nineties. There has to be a stamp on them saying that they meet the low, low lead requirement.
Started with water coolers, too.
Yeah, I make a motion to go to the voting session.
Second.
Motion and a second to move item C to the voting session. It'll be held on January 20th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item D, the City Council will discuss a proposed ordinance conveying property to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Oak Grove Road, Katy Lane, and Westwood Boulevard intersection, project number JOP 2274. Mr. Kaplan.
Anyone from Smith and Company? It looks like Dominic's here.
Good evening.
No.
Dominic Thompson with Smith and Company. Um, as part of the Oak Grove Road project, the city purchased, uh, right of way for the intersection improvements at, uh, Westwood and Oak Grove Road. Basically, what this does is give the property that the city purchased to the state so that they can construct, uh, their project, their property. So, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, we're, we're good. Just need a motion. Unless you have any questions, so...
Make a motion. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion. We pass this on to the voting sessions. That's tonight, isn't it?
Yes, it will be held tonight.
All right, second.
JOP 22474 project.
That's double F.
Okay. Uh, motion and a second to move item D to the voting session. That will be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, okay, the motion carries. Moving on to action required items. Bill number 7772, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to sell liquor by the drink at a restaurant in a C3 central area commercial zone district.
First reading for 7772?
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading of 7772. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to sell liquor by the drink at a restaurant in a C3 central area commercial zone district located at 506 Vine Street.
Move for second reading, bill number 7772.
Second.
Motion and a second for second reading of bill number 7772. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to sell liquor by the drink at a restaurant in a C3 central area commercial zone district located at 506 Vine Street.
Move that up.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt bill number 7772. Do we have any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir?
No.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Bill number 7773, the City Council will take action on an ordinance selecting a consultant for a feasibility study of the City Hall, Police Department, Municipal Court for, for the city of Poplar Bluff.
Move for first reading, bill number 7773.
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading of bill number 7773. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to, uh, selecting a consultant for a feasibility study of the City Hall, Police Department, Municipal, Municipal Court for the city of Poplar Bluff.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second for second reading of bill number 7773. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, selecting a consultant for a feasibility study of the City Hall, Police Department, Municipal Court for the city of Poplar Bluff.
Move for adoption. Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number 7773. Do we have any comments or questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I do, if I may.
Yes.
Um, in this process of, uh, selecting a consultant through an RFQ process, request for qualifications, um, I just wanted to share with you guys some information, um, about the process and how we came to the initial recommendation, um, that was previously, um, proposed at the prior meeting, and then, uh, and then later changed, uh, which is at the council's discretion. Uh, but I want to walk you through that process, and also, um, to give you some education as to why, um, the recommendation was made ultimately. We do have several members of that committee in the audience that would like to share, um, their, um, feedback with you, uh, as to the decision, or the initial recommendation as well, if we may. But, um, again, these, these recommendations aren't taken lightly. Uh, we go through a very lengthy process of vetting, um, potential, um, vendors to work for the city, and we do so under the guise of, um, a lot of scrutiny, not only internally, where we scrutinize heavily the proposals, but we do so under the guise that, um, our decisions or our recommendations, in this case, it's not our decision, it's a council, but our recommendations, are not ultimately popular. Uh, but we do so in a manner that we feel that's best, based on our interpretation of the documents, and again, our interpretation of the qualifications. Um, so in this case, I just, uh, would invite, um, you know, those members of the Review Committee at this time, that if, um, if they would like to share, um, some feedback with the, uh, council, uh, you know, I'd invite them to do so at this to, at this time.
Sandy Walker. I represent the Municipal Utility Division. Like Mr. Kaplan said, we didn't take it lightly. Uh, we got packets way ahead of time before we ever had our first meeting, so that we could individually look at the packets. And once we had our first meeting, uh, we went over who met all the RFQ requirements, and we found out that all three did. So, we decided to interview all three of the, the firms that sent us our, replied to our RFQ. And after we went through the process of the interview, um, we determined that we would all consider what we heard, well, in the process of, of going through it all, we, there was, um, we had input from people that were on the committee that knew certain things about different firms. We also called references, the police department did some reference checks for us, and got, um, Pam and Mark had some input. Everybody just had a little bit of their own input about the three different firms. And, and then we interviewed, and during the discussion, we came to the conclusion that a feasibility study was to be, to look at what the options were for the city and what would be best for the taxpayers. And in that, that means that the person that's doing the study should look at, do we want to try to do something with the building we already have? Meaning, do we want to renovate? Do we want to renovate part of it, and tear part of it down, and build part of it new? Or do we want a whole new structure? When we done that, only two of the firms came up as who we would consider. And of those two firms, in their packets that they sent, one of the firms, basically, they didn't look at reusing anything that was here. Basically, they focused on just building a new city hall. And in their track record, they didn't have a whole lot of feasibility study. Basically, everything they had done was just new buildings. And the other company, um, they gave us examples of what could possibility be here, as in tearing part of it down, reusing part of it, or could we take it all down and build a new one, or could we relocate to another, uh, you know, they gave us lots of options. And when we looked at that, we said, "Well, what we really want here is a, a, a whole picture for everybody to look at and decide what is the best choice." And we felt like, um, we also had to take into consideration, because we know it's very important for the city's money to stay within the city. And out of those two, there was only one that's in, actually affiliated, that's part of the actual city limits. And that was GHN and Smith and Company. And they were the ones that actually, GHN came and they gave us a video of, uh, Missouri State School in Springfield was looking at buying an old chicken plant, and they had them do a feasibility study to see if it was feasible for them to buy it, renovate it, use the property, or whatever. And they gave us a real visual example. They were very professional, very thorough. They were very specific about the different options that we had. And from what all the other committee, I didn't get a sit-in on with Dillian Traxel because I had a conflict of meetings, but some of the other committee members said that they didn't mention anything really, they didn't discuss, and it wasn't in their packet as to doing something with what we currently had. It was mostly focused on doing something new. So we felt, as a committee, the majority of us felt like, as our job, it was best for us to choose the one that would look at the broader picture than just focus on building a new building.
Was your committee pretty, was your committee split, other than one vote?
Yes.
So basically, how many people were on your committee?
There was seven of us.
So you had three, three, and then one extra person that voted?
It changed.
So it was basically, it was basically a split committee.
Well, actually, that one extra person had picked a firm all alone. And when it was three to three, that person chose to go with the three that, that's how we ended it.
Yeah, I think that's why the council decided to stay with, I know you said that the one is local, but in reality, you've got two firms that are basically right in Poplar Bluff, I mean, they're not in the city limits, but they're, they very much contribute to the city of Poplar Bluff because they are so close. I think that's what Councilman Tinsley was trying to, to say when he made that motion.
Well, we also looked at the fact that that firm also has an office somewhere else where part of their, uh, employees, I guess you would say, work in another town. They have two offices, one is located here and one is located in Cape. So technically, part of the money would go somewhere else. We, we basically had the same situation. We had half of our, of each one of them that had something here in Poplar Bluff, but then half of it went somewhere else, too. So that's what made us determine, well, who gave us the best option of really giving us a true feasibility study?
But the problem, the, the majority of this project is the architect. It's not...
Only for the feasibility study, because this is not going to be...
That's what we're, that's what we're doing right now. It's a feasibility study. And 90% of that project is the architect, which we would be sending to Springfield instead of having our local architect.
And, Councilman Tinsley, let me explain the, the dynamic of the feasibility study real quickly, if I may, and I won't go and belabor it, but, um, really, I see it more as a 50/50 partnership. The only reason why I know this, because I went through it in Michigan, is you'd have your architect that's involved in regards to, obviously, the billing standards, how they're going to design it, what your, what your, um, you know, which are, you know, you do renovation versus, uh, non-renovation, site selection, that kind of stuff, where your, where your engineer's going to come vitally important in this as well, as regarding, obviously, uh, possible billing material, how they're going to do the foundational, uh, piece of it, they're going to give you an estimated of cost. Um, and so they, they're both, it's a 50/50 partnership, because what we want, there's two things we want on this feasibility study. One, uh, we want to know, okay, if we're going to build a new city hall, yes or no, or are we going to renovate one? And the same question for the rest of it. And then also, where would the site be? Uh, thirdly, um, then, what's a estimate of probable cost? Um, and so, um, without that engineering, estimate of probable cost piece, you, that's the real, that's obviously from a finance perspective I'm looking for, but, um, the architecture piece, not to diminish what the architect does, it is important, don't get me wrong, but I don't want you to diminish the importance of that engineering piece. I see it more as a 50/50, um, partnership, so...
One concern that I had, and, you know, they're basing, and I can appreciate where the committee came from, and they're basing their decision on a format that they had, but from what I understood, the previous administration had, had discussed with someone the possibility of saving this structure, and they said it shouldn't, shouldn't try to be saved. And then there was another cursory overview of this structure by another individual who's also said this structure should not be saved. And I was always a fan of trying to save in part of it, the part that we're in now. So we had two individuals tell us, "No, you shouldn't try to renovate this structure." And that's why I'm kind of concerned why that that was left on the table, when we had two other individuals tell us no.
And the only reason why I left it on the table for you is, um, when you do a true full-blown feasibility study, you need to openly, um, bring in all parties, being the public alike, and people that are informed as to the, uh, facts, and let everyone come to a consensus. So we do have to kind of rehash some old, um, I guess, discussions that we had previously. I'm not, uh, denying, uh, that comes to yours truly as well. Would I be surprised that the, it would be efficient to renovate this space? I would be surprised. Um, but I, again, um, that's only my opinion. I want to show the data to the public at large through a feasibility, um, action, uh, to have them come to that same conclusion, given the facts.
Um, I'm sorry, Sandy. It, I just want to know if there's anyone here from either of the architect or engineering firms that would like to come up and speak about this? Thank you, Sandy.
Uh, yes, I, I'm Ben Traxel with Dillian Traxel Architects, and, uh, we have an office here, probably 200 yards from the, uh, the border of Poplar Bluff. We are outside of the, the city limits. Um, and, uh, we're willing to annex if we could be contiguous with the city limits, but, uh, we, we are not at the moment, so, um, we'll see about that when the time comes, I suppose. Uh, we are teamed with Horner and Schiffer in engineering, and we teamed with them specifically for their mechanical and electrical engineering services that they provide. Um, those services are vital to looking at this structure and all of its systems to, to see about the feasibility of it being reused in any way. I don't know right now if this building is. I haven't looked at it, uh, in that much detail, and, uh, it, it takes a lot of detail to actually get in there and, and evaluate it. So, we plan to do that. And if you look at our packet, it was geared specifically toward a feasibility study, not, we weren't asked to, um, uh, design a new, uh, building in any way. It was just to compare that to what a, uh, possible new building may be, so we can have a general, uh, study done on what a new building would be, but really evaluate this building to, uh... this building to comparatively look at the two to see what the nature between the two would be. So that's what we plan to do, and that's what our process that we laid out in our packet would be. And with that, well, that's what we tried to explain to the committee at the time, and that's what we plan on doing, should we be selected.
So you're also planning on evaluating all sides of this scenario as well?
Mechanically, electrically, plumbing, architecturally, with billing codes, everything like that would be involved with it. We don't see too much civil engineering involved, a little bit maybe with parking and traffic around the outside. But for the most part, we see it as architectural and mechanical, electrical, plumbing evaluations for this.
Does any of the council have any questions for him?
Excuse me?
I was just asking if any of the council had any question for Mr. Traxel.
You all go do this yourself?
Yes, all the work will be done architecturally right here in Poplar Bluff, yes. We have a Cape office that's still in the process of getting open. It's not open at this time yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, if I may say one more quick thing is it's difficult because when you have two, I think, very good proposals and both have an element of it that's local versus non-local, it's hard to go through the process. And I just want to, one, to thank the committee for their hard efforts, because they did a good job. And two, we all know ultimately, and as it's advertised, ultimately is the decision of the council as to who is ultimately awarded. You guys have the right and privilege to either reject all bids, or any and all bids, or accept any portion thereof, or full, or in full. So again, I didn't want Dillian Traxel or Horner &amp; Schiffer to think that, you know, Heath Kaplan's not in support of their firms, or that, I think hopefully they know different than that I do. But I also just wanted to recognize the efforts that I appreciated, those employees that participated in this process. And also thank GHN and Smith Engineering. I think they put together a very good proposal, and that's the reason why narrowly won the initial recommendation.
Is there anyone here from either of those firms that want to speak?
Billy Cobb of Smith &amp; Company. I didn't really come prepared to speak on this because I just assumed it was the...
That's okay. I don't think Mr. Traxel was either.
I just assumed it was done and moving on. I mean, as Mr. Kaplan already said, I know it's the council's decision, so I mean, you know, we look forward to working with the city on other projects and, you know, and we understand your decision one way or the other. I appreciate Mr. Kaplan bringing up about the committee because that would be my only comment on my side of the table is, once you go through the whole process and we invest time and, you know, to do the interview and the SOQ that, I understand it was a close, you know, four to three, so I understand that part of it. But once you go through that process and somebody selects you, that's, you're just hoping that's, that was the end of it. And so that, that would be my only comment, and I appreciate Mr. Kaplan bringing that up, so.
The only thing I'd ask, Mr. Kaplan, if the, if it's several years before we can afford to do this, build a new city hall or whatever, would this feasibility study other than an estimated cost, of course, you know, the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost, be accurate?
Oh, yes. I mean, your borrowing costs are going to, are going to go up, yes, the longer you wait. The way I see the proposed schedule going is your feasibility study would be completed, obviously, in fifteen with construction, hopefully, starting in sixteen, or spring of sixteen. Now, that's, I'm just not scaring anyone, but that's just what I'm, what I'm looking for. But no, you're actually correct, is absolutely correct, is, you know, this asset, as we know, our assets in general are deteriorating. And the longer we wait, borrowing costs could potentially go up, which more than likely will, because you can't get much lower than where we're at now. So, yeah, to answer your question, yes.
Yeah, there was a move for adoption. We're about to do a roll call, so if there's no other further comments, I would ask to do the roll call.
Councilwoman Abshear?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Okay, moving on to... I'm sorry. Bill number 7774. The city council will take action on an ordinance approving change order number one and closing out the Oak Grove Road Phase Three project.
First reading of bill number 7774?
Second.
Motion and second for first reading of bill number 7774. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In accordance with the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, approving change order number one and closing out the Oak Grove Road Phase Three project.
Move for second reading.
Please, second.
Motion and second for second reading of bill number 7774. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In accordance with the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, approving change order number one and closing out the Oak Grove Phase Three project.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second for adoption. Any comments or questions?
Isn't this the one that's going to save us money?
Yes, sir.
Right, I thought it was.
Roll call.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshear?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Bill number 7775. The city council will take action on ordinance creating a tree advisory board for the city of Poplar Bluff.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion and second for first reading of bill number 7775. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In accordance with the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, establishing a tree advisory board for the city.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion and second for second reading of bill number 7775. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In accordance with the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, establishing a tree advisory board for the city.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption of bill number 7775. Do we have any comments or questions?
I think it's a good board for us to have. I'm looking forward to see how effective it is and how the citizens take with it.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshear?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Bill number 7776. The city council will take action on an ordinance amending ordinance number 7581, authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff to execute a contract for the purchase of real estate from Cheshire Development LLC.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion and second for first reading of bill number 7776. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In accordance with the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, amending ordinance number 7581 involving the purchase of real property.
Move for second reading of bill number 7776.
Motion and second for second reading of bill number 7776. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In accordance with the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, amending ordinance number 7581 involving the purchase of real property.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption of 7776. Do we have any comments or questions?
This unique opportunity we have to add to the existing park facility that we have and working with the park department, I think this would be a really good move for the soccer fields and other uses of that area.
Okay. I'm just going to stick with what I did last time. I'm going to abstain, even though lawyer has advised that I have no conflict, but I will just, just in case. Roll call.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshear?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Okay, bill number 7777. The city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff to execute a deed in favor of the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the Oak Grove Road, Katy Lane, and Westwood Boulevard Intersection Project number JOP 2274.
Move for first reading of bill number 7777.
Second.
Motion and second for first reading of bill number 7777. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In accordance with the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the city to execute a deed in favor of the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the Oak Grove Road, Katy Lane, and Westwood Boulevard Intersection Project JOP 2274.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion and second for second reading of bill number 7777. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In accordance with the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the city to execute a deed in favor of the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the Oak Grove Road, Katy Lane, and Westwood Boulevard Intersection Project JOP 2274.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption of bill number 7777. Do we have any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilwoman Abshear?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Moving on to item GG. The city council, the city of Poplar Bluff, will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law, Section 610.021.1, RSMO relative to litigation, Section 610.021.2 relative to real estate, and Section 610.021.3, RSMO relative to personnel.
Make a motion to adjourn following the city manager's report.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn following the city manager's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council. You know, before I mentioned to everyone, if I have mentioned, I apologize, but happy new year to everyone. It's the first meeting of the new fiscal year and new calendar year. Excited about moving forward with the city's new adopted budget. First things that happened is the fourteen budget efforts are on their way to now aggressively close out the fiscal year fourteen. So that, those efforts are moving forth. With that, we've already uploaded the 2015 approved budget into ENCODE. It's not quite activated yet until we close out fourteen, so we're going through that process. But also, I've wiped clean a few anyone's been in my office and has ever seen my giant, you know, erase board that's been wiped clean and now replaced with the new 2015 strategic goals. I've got fourteen of them already. I promise I won't go through a fourteen with them for the sake of brevity. But to go over the major top categories that I'll be working on in fiscal fifteen is not in any necessarily order of importance, is financial policies are, is the first thing, is we have to completely revamp all of the city's financial policies that go from purchasing policy to our investment policy, to our cash management policy, to our debt, debt policy. All of those policies will be rehabbed. And again, this is all in accordance with, if you looked at the city of Poplar Bluff's 2012 credit rating from Standard &amp; Poor's indicates each and every one of these items is a deficient item. Those items will be corrected in fiscal fifteen. Actually, it'll be corrected relatively quickly in fifteen because we want to get those policies in place, one, for budget management purposes, but also to be able to roll out our new purchase cards, our P-cards, as we like to call them, moving forward. And we don't want to do that, obviously, since we have policy and procedure in place and also appropriate training. Also, secondly, we're going to be making some very strong efforts, concerted efforts towards the Coliseum to get their budget under control. And again, in no way, shape, or form should that be misinterpreted, is that we're locking the facility or limiting the scope of the, of the facility as it is in play right now. We're going to work very strongly with the existing staff and with possibly with some consultants to see what we can do to quickly change the path in which the Coliseum is on financially. So you're going to see some strong efforts pushed there, and obviously, not only with the staff, but with the advisory committee of the Coliseum as well. Also, in regards to the electric rates, as we know, it's been an item of contention, but we are expecting our, our rate study really should be coming either late this week or early next week. And once we get that date, I'll be sharing that with staff, Bill Buck specifically, and then we'll go through that. And if we have tweaks, we'll work that directly with the consultant, and then eventually, once we get to a final product, that'll be coordinated through the utility advisory board, and then obviously, eventually it'll make its way to the council. I'm simplifying these processes, but I think everyone knows it's going to take some time for all of these processes to work themselves out. Also, a capital management, a capital improvement management plan will be deployed in obviously making sure that each and every one of our capital assets are being evaluated on a continual annual basis. And if, obviously, as we do know in regards to any budget document, that we are going to be wrong in some way, shape, or form, you can make any best guess that you try to make in a document, but what you do know is there will be some curve ball thrown at you when it comes to a capital asset. And so we will, again, that's why we do the annual review, to make changes and move priorities when we need to and when those curve balls are thrown our way. So again, I just wanted to let you know that we are hitting the ground running in fiscal year 2015, and I'm not going to slow down now. So I appreciate everyone's support through this transition, and I appreciate the public's patience. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan.